Okay, we've come to order. I'd like to call the Rochester Common Council Meeting for December 19th to order. Our first business on our agenda, of course, is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Harry Webb, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. As you all know, we're meeting early this month because of the Christmas holiday. So, the second order of business then is to approve our regular meeting minutes from November the 28th, 2017. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So move. And a second. Second move by Goodman, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. And the Board of Public Works and Safety minutes from November 9th, 22nd are for information only. We have no communications tonight. We have no public hearings tonight. Uh, let's just write down to new business. Uh, okay, the 2017 encumbrances and transfers. Shada, you're up.
The... A lot of times you guys will see these in January. This year, because of the flip-flops, bumping the council meeting up a little sooner. Actually, it's meeting before the last board of work, so I shifted things backwards a little bit. And the encumbrances, these are invoices that have came in that will be paid out in January, but the departments would like for it to be actually expended from this year's budget. So we just take these, this amount of money and carry it forward into, and essentially, if they have a, for instance, if they have a thousand-dollar account line item for, like in park general operating, um, they, if they had a thousand dollars budget for next year, this would actually take it up to fifteen, thirty-four, fifty-seven for next year. And then they still retain their thousand dollars that they had asked for in their budget for next year. And it doesn't decrease anything. And again, we can only do this in December at the end of the year, knowing that they have it, that they have the money available and appropriations to be able to carry it forward. The, um, park is, that one was a, an equipment purchase, I believe that was for the baby changing stations and the hand dryers for the park restrooms. And then the other one is for the Board of Public Works and Safety, and that was for the demolition of the building at 117 East Seventh Street. That is the encumbrances. Any questions on any of those? Either of them, this is my count.
Do we have more we deal with than in February?
I've been scrutinizing the finances the last week, trying to make sure that I had everything taken care of so that I could bring it to you tonight. And unless there's an anomaly after this week's pay that I didn't catch, um, which I, between Chris and I, we tried to catch everything we could, but for the board of works meeting, so hopefully there won't be, I'm not going to guarantee it, but there should be for next year. At least encumbrances, I can say no.
Any, uh, any other questions regarding the encumbrances and transfers?
Do we need to, uh, do we need to read those, these into the public pressure, hello?
Uh, probably should, shouldn't we?
It's not a resolution or, um, so...
The record?
If you want to put it on the record, you could, uh, need to approve that.
Yeah, I need it approved. I think what they're asking is maybe...
The whole thing individually?
Yeah.
If you, if you approve it, then you're, you're cooperating kind of by reference.
Okay.
And I, I would move to approve the encumbrances from the 2017 budget as presented by Shada.
Say, uh...
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Smith and seconded by Councilman Goodman to approve the transfers and encumbrances. Those in favor signify by raising your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, okay, um, now we move down to the nomination of the 2018 council president. I'd like to just say before we open the floor for nominations that President Goodman has served very well this year, and I really appreciate his guidance and counsel on this, on this council. Thank you very much. I want to open the floor now for nominations for a president of the council for 2018.
I apologize. Amir Decker, would we have the Fourth Street update or you guys have that?
Yes. That's next.
I did, I did send it, but I never get it out, so.
I'm by the end of burning desire to do the job, but Brian doesn't want to do it.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Do I nominate Brian? It's been, Brian has been nominated by Councilman Smith. Councilman Garrett has seconded that. I, I would entertain a motion to close that. So, so moved by Councilman Miller, second on that. And Councilman Heidi seconds that. And those in favor of those two, hey, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brian.
Oh, my gosh. I think I got married like you one time. Can we cut that, please? Sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so you're going to put another year, buddy. No, you have, you've done an excellent job. I don't think anybody up here would deny that. It's been a good year for you. Thank you. Okay, well, that brings us to our guest. Jeremy, would you like to step up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the Fourth Street project?
Jeremy Rochak, Rodan Hune Associates. We are the engineering firm working for the city for the design of the Fourth Street Improvement Project, which is primarily a storm drainage project to improve the, uh, the pedestrian access and improve the drainage all the way from roughly the railroad by the mill area all the way up to State Road 25. So, uh, originally the project started when we put together a grant application back in spring of this year. Um, at that time, the grant application, it was for a community crossings grant in that, uh, at a 25% match by the city, and that would, uh, grant up to $1 million. So at that time, we, we kind of identified the project, we sculpted out at about $1.3 million worth of improvements we anticipated at that time, which would have accounted for $1 million of NDOT 20 and then the approximately $300,000 match by the city. Uh, since, um, we found out, was it in October, I want to say? I don't recall offhand, but in that...
Yeah, in October.
Yeah, did provide a grant. The grant was in the amount of $670,000 as opposed to the $1 million mark. So, at that point, we, in order to meet the schedule required for this grant, we had already started the design work as well. Uh, so at that time, then, we started looking at how we can work with the design to perhaps achieve some cost savings through it. What we also found through the course of the design, as we got more survey information, as-built information on the existing utilities, more in-depth info than, than what we had just in the GIS at the time, is that the, uh, there were several utility conflicts, conflicts, excuse me, and a, uh, another unforeseen circumstance that arose with the drainage into Mill Creek that accounted for additional costs that are now anticipated in the construction. So we're now at the 60% design range. Currently, our, the estimated construction cost right now is right about 1.9 million at this point. Uh, so everybody, we have a packet that kind of looks like this, and it's color-coded with the, the opinion of cost that we put together. And then, uh, on the second page is a map of the, the scope of the project, and you can kind of see where the colors are, are lining up. So essentially, we need to start in the yellow area. That, that's where the drainage will outfall into Mill Creek and then head north on Ohio Street or Fourth Street. And then from that point, you can see that's, that's where we collect all the water between that Mill railroad area all the way to 25. Um, so at this point, we've had, uh, several conversations, and during our last conversation, I, I guess, um, I'll leave it to Shada, the mayor, um, there was conversations of how to address these, uh, these costs at this point.
Yeah, obviously, if the grant would have come in at the full $1 million, uh, we wouldn't be looking to fund more of this out of some of our existing funds. But in going back and trying to see what, uh, what we can do with the project of only 670,000, and by the way, that was no fault of ours that we only got 670,000. This year, uh, NDOT had a tremendous amount of response for this grant program.
Yep.
And I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, those who asked for a million and got 670 did pretty well.
Yes. Yeah, so my understanding of it is the state did pretty well in, in what they got versus what they had asked. There were several communities who, who refunded a much smaller percentage of what they requested. Some did not receive any funding.
The county participated for the first time last year, and they asked for a million, got a million dollars. Uh, like I said, the, the response was much greater this year. Uh, they again went and asked for a million and got just right at 500,000, I believe. So, uh, we didn't do anything that would, uh, have restricted what monies we've got. They just didn't have as much money to pass around. They wanted everybody to get something. And they did give, as I understand, in preference to those who had not requested before. So we did achieve some monies because we had not requested before. So anyway, uh, we massaged the program, looked at it. We don't want to cheapen up what we're trying to do up there, so thus, the 300,000 trying to pay from some other places. Shada, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. One of the things, as we were sitting and as I've been looking at finances, obviously, one of the revenue sources, or a couple of different revenue sources we have, or funds that we have available, would be one our rainy day. If we take the grant amount, which was 670,000, we also have our low N V H fund, which was our one-time revenue that we received two years ago from the state. And that was to, we were supposed to put 75% of that back to spend towards street road improvements. 25% we could put into the rainy day, which is what we did. So I've got 375,000 for, that we were anticipating using towards the grant match. So total monies we have right now sitting available towards this particular project is a million forty-five. Breaks us up about 176,000 short, or, I'm sorry, 876,000 short when you're looking at total numbers. Uh, we can, we, we have a little over a million in our rainy day. We can also transfer money, if we pull money out of rainy day, we can transfer money back in to kind of come up, to keep that short up so that we're not depleting that all the way down. And we're fortunate in the fact that the way the state has changed how we can do our rainy day transfers, it used to be we could only do it, I believe it was twice, once or twice a year. Now we can do them as we need them, and we can pull from multiple funds. One of the, you know, the benefits, as I was sitting there trying to, to look at all of this and come up with a, some kind of a strategic plan, is N V H is actually receiving real tax revenue now, and then come next year, we should start seeing some of the gas tax increase revenue that'll increase our N V H fund a little bit. So I, we haven't been doing any rainy day transfers out of N V H because I've always, that's one of my funds I'm always trying to protect because we have so much expense going out. Right now, cash balance-wise, they're in a position that I could do a 2017 transfer and a 2018 transfer. And I remind you, I can only do 10% of the whole budget, so we're only looking at about $140,000 per transfer. But that was, that I could put over, back over into rainy day, and then we could also pull from our park operating, I figure, about 80,000. Because again, I don't want to shorten our cash balance in any of our funds, just simply because we do have, we don't get paid twice a year. So I don't want to shortchange them, but we also, I also know where our balance would be. I have not, this does not calculate in our December settlement yet. So I'm using numbers again because we're mid-month, I haven't received all of that information in yet for receiving into for our December settlement. So the numbers I'm looking at don't include that. You know, I'm hesitant on the general fund. Normally, I would say pull 300,000 out of the general, throw it in rainy day, that's what we've done in the past, for those of you that have been on the council. Normally, we target between 200,000 to 300,000. Until we get our December settlement, I wouldn't, I'm hesitant to say that much. I would say we can pull some out of general and shift it over. So all in all, I could probably easily put roughly 400,000 to 500,000, maybe a little bit more back into rainy day relatively quickly if we pull the full 800,000 out to complete this project from the railroad tracks all the way to 25. Quite honestly, when you look at that, we have a lot of pedestrian traffic on Fourth Street, and it's not the safest place to walk without your body. It, it's, it's very concerning to us, uh, you know, the safety of our pedestrians out there. Plus, it's a growing issue, you've got, in Fork County, you've got black car out there, so you have kids out there. I think if we were to add the pedestrian traffic, safety buffer with adding sidewalks, I think, you know, that would help parents to feel a little more at ease, you know, with kids out in that area as well. Plus, we've got some potential economic development coming in that area that's going to expand it, so we're going to see some additional revenues coming in property tax-wise from that area as well in the next couple of years. So there's a lot of things that are kind of churning, it's just getting us to that point of, comfortable of taking this project and just completing it. And that's why we wanted to bring it to you, because with our grant, we want to have a decision made by the end of January, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just because of the grant deadline.
End of January.
End of January.
We'll be bringing the specifics to you in January.
Yeah, we just wanted to give you guys something to start chewing on and think about and come up with any questions, information you might have with the project before we made a final decision on what, because obviously, when it comes to any of these transfers or the day monies, that all has to come from you guys. You have to make all those decisions, approve all of those decisions.
I'm sorry if I missed it earlier, but the balance, what's the balance in the rainy day fund now?
Right now is a million fifty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty and seventy-five. So, I mean, we're, I mean, right now, we could take the entire 876,000 out and we still would have money, but that's why I'm saying, if we transfer money back in to try to help offset some of that, we're not completing our rainy day fund.
Right.
Because that's the last thing we want to do. We, we are in a position, financially, we're in a very good position, and we don't want to lose that, because we do have a lot of, we have a lot of projects right now, a lot of things, including utilities, that's coming down the pipe that we keep churning around, so we need to make sure that we're prepared for all of that stuff.
Well, this council should know that within the last couple of months, too, we've taken the steps to annex the industrial park, the parts of the industrial park that are in the county, we're not annexed. We've got investors that's committed to 11 acres of factory building in the industrial park. He's reviewing the contract, and we're hoping that'll be solidified by the next meeting. We have, we've got another investor who's contemplating a 75,000 square foot factory in that area out there. There's a lot of activity starting to pop up. As there's a lot of activity starting to pop up, south end of Rochester, with the pilot folks going in down there and the corridor talk, they're becoming more and more part of the program. We have a lot of, a lot of things going on, a lot of positive things. So we'll try to keep you in the loop as much as we can on all of that.
And one last note on the, on the cost breakdown, and I'm sure you, and you may already understand this, but, um, part of the reason we did the breakdown was to see, you know, do we phase this out over time? And with the, with the unfortunate drawback is phasing it out over time and perhaps getting a different funding source down the road per, say, the last section, your costs at that point will probably go up like 10 to 20%, just because then you got new mobilization and demobilization and, uh, other contractor-related expenses that, um, essentially, the more you do at one time, the more bank for the buck you get. So just something to keep in mind as well.
That was the thing you asked, that was some of part of our end conversation we were having, was just that, do we take, you know, right now, we know, and, and we do, obviously, any costs that we're looking at right now do have contingency built in, so that way, hopefully, to avoid any above and beyond anything that's here, hopefully, the costs will actually come in less than this. That's our whole, so, but as with any engineering project, they always have a contingency. So we're prepared as best we can.
I understand this came in, the first, the first bid on this came in at a million three something, Eugene?
First, yes. On construction.
No, three. Okay, and that's when we thought we were getting a million?
Yes, when we applied for it.
Applied for it. And now we're at 190, you might as well say, yeah, 192. Are those just normal costs that would take it from the million three to 19600,000?
So there's...
The patents we got, the amount of money we got, we're getting from the grain.
Oh, hey. Um, so those additional...
The earnings do.
Yeah.
Those additional costs, uh, are for essentially additional material and additional construction. Uh, so there were a number of utility conflicts that arose, um, from existing utilities that are out there.
When, when we did the survey?
Yes.
Stormwater was a large portion of that.
Oh, I, I'm bleeding out there. I've been aware of it.
We all did.
We're, and just not saying anything, I got a Donkey, what, who were the other people that visited?
We did, you have, I'm not...
Engineering firm?
Yes.
Just, just Donahue.
Did you get any other bids?
Engineering project, we're not required to, uh, on what the first thing was that happened to you on your bid.
Uh, when you guys came back, I'm assuming you're talking...
Oh, yes, on our, our, uh...
On your council.
Yes, so, yeah, when, when we met with the Board of Public Works, our, our, um, for our, uh, our design work and, and our time, um, actually, the, the Board asked us to go back and trim out, uh, some of the scope and, and some, some of the, uh, the compensation. So I think our costs, or it should get costing down by a 20% or so.
Yeah, we said they were too high.
Yeah.
We went back, drawing board, found some things.
Yeah, we, we...
We weren't even working pretty hard on it.
We, typically, on a project like this, you actually go through kind of three stages of review. So we, we decided to, instead of having a 30% review, we decided to go straight to 60% review, so that kind of reduced, um, reduced some of the costs, and then we could take out some of our meeting, um, and, and actually, some of my business, I, I put four marketing suite units on the board. I think you care of that.
And John, too, I'm sorry. Or I was going to say, and one of the other things, too, is when we actually go out for bid for the actual construction, that we will, we will have to solicit the full effort bidding, all of that stuff, to solicit the construction of the project. And Donkey has regulations on it. I'm sorry, Karen.
When you were making your changes and readjusting, uh, did that in any way affect the size of the piping that was going to be used in any of these phases? Uh, because we, it was stated that it was absolutely necessary that we change the sizes because some of them were very much just...
She's thinking about the, you're thinking about the...
You have a project?
The other...
Oh, I'm on the wrong project.
This is a separate project.
This is, this is...
But actually, this will tie right in.
I was about to say, I thought they overworked over...
This would tie right into that project on Main Street and, uh, Ninth Street.
They're individual projects, but they're, they have joined, yeah, basically.
So when you did rework it, what type of changes did you make in the structure of the costs?
So what we had to, where those additional costs came from is that they're working around, so, um, additional labor costs are going to be required for some of the conflicts to avoid, uh, the existing water main in a few locations as well as, uh, the existing sewer along Ohio Street. So it's, it will require, um, harder labor, more careful labor, which requires more time and more manpower by the contractors. It will require more materials, uh, more, more joints and fittings, um, to work around these inter, uh, existing utilities. In addition, we need to relocate into more of the pavement areas, so whereas we didn't account for full replacement of the pavement, um, it's now going to be required because of some of the existing utilities out of there. And then in addition, the original, um, plan was to run open channel, um, from the south end of Ohio Street into Mill Creek, and, uh, in our conversations with I D M about it, they had determined on this one that it would require us to have a closed conveyance system and not allow an open channel because it goes through the city's well field. So there, and again, we, we have additional pipe costs and additional, the excavation kind of offsets, but then the work to put the expiration back together is...
Yeah, that, that was an interesting process. You don't, uh, you always have, I D M, we done three different, people done three different assessments of what we needed to do out there. Basically, we ended up taking the most stringent one and saying, we need this, we won't have any issue with any of them. Does that sound familiar?
The cost of being, uh, Donahue's going to be, uh, the subcontractor for the...
No, we're, we're just doing the design and the work, so, so we are essentially, as an agent of the city, in design, and then through the bidding process, we will help with that as well. Um, so if there's any questions during construction pertaining to materials or how it can be routed or rearranged, uh, we might be able to assist on that end of things. But once the construction bids come in, we're, we're kind of, at that point. So we don't get into any of the construction or installation or anything. That'll be a contractor, and like Shada said, that'll be done under a public bidding format.
And this is one of, this is what we've done, Randy's worked on a lot, these, these projects. He's our, kind of our project manager liaison between the contractors and the engineering firm, being the man on site, being the guy handling, handling that. I apologize for his not being here tonight, folks. He had a problem out at the waste treatment plant, he and Marcus are in an issue out there. You got to send him that note.
The title.
Yeah. Anything else for Jeremy? Well, thanks for coming up tonight. Appreciate it. You talked to Randy and Jerry and Marcus were going to be here. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
My, my last question to the council would be, in thoughts of all of this, what I need to know from you is if you want me to prepare for the, for the January council meeting, all of the documentation that you would need, that I need, required of you for approvals for all of this, for any expenses, transfers, additional appropriations, all of that stuff, because if we do, it require, I have to advertise, uh, all of that information, especially if we need to do an additional appropriation out of rainy day, um, which I actually wouldn't have to do that January, I can do that later, but if, to get all the preparation paperwork ready, if you want me to go ahead and prepare that, so it's ready for the next council ready, if you want me to go ahead and prepare that so it's ready for the next council meeting and at that point...
We have to have some of them in January.
Right, but I'm asking...
If I did have a thing, so we could tie it up and wind off, what can you say?
That's what I'm asking, is that if you want me to do it all in one, one, or sort of phase it out, because I can do both, depending on which, like the initial appropriation, I could, would you do that?
Get it over, get it over.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think this satisfied a six hundred, seven thousand dollar grant, we have to show that we have the, uh, the bids advertised out there by what, the end of April?
No, February.
End of February?
So, yeah, right now the plan is to visit project through February and have somebody on, uh, have somebody contracted beginning of March, so that by May, March, late March.
That was what I wanted to know, because I just, if you want it all in one shot or want me to break it up for you?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thanks again, Jeremy. We have no unfinished old business, uh, so it's just right down to the department head stuff. Chief Butler came in on his day off. Thank you, chief.
Good evening. For the month of November, structure fires two in Rochester Township, one in the city. Mutual aids, one in the Henry Township, one in the Yime Township. Auto fire alarms, one in Rochester Township. Calls for smoke, one in Rochester Township. Vehicle fires, one in Rochester Township. Rush fire, one in Rochester Township. Space heater, one in the city. Accidents, three, drove the ambulance once from the accident scene. Medical assist, eleven in the city. Three in Rochester Township, drove the ambulance once. C O checks, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Service calls, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. A total of thirty-six with one drill. Ending your questions, that concludes my report.
You mentioned, Jeremy, the other day in passing, we have, uh, some volunteers who have not qualified for their Class A uniforms.
Correct, I sent a few more down to you and you to get, uh, fit it and ordered. And so, what it is, the volunteers, their first year as a volunteer, they're on probation for a year, and then once they're done with their year of probation, they get voted on by the body again. Um, and then once they're, they're voted on regularly, they get their Class As, we send them down to Top to get their blue shirt, volunteers ordering their, their badge. Um, we order the traditional helmets and the fargant base with a leather shield in front. So, that's what they get once they complete their probation. And their Class As is the icing and the cake.
Now, I don't know how many of you here have seen our firefighters in their Class As, but they are sharp, really nice looking bunch. Any questions for Tom? Thank you, chief. And again, thanks for coming.
Yep.
Uh, for the month of November, we had twenty-two total accidents, two of those were personal injury, we issued seventy-one warnings, seventy-three total offenses, forty-one case reports, six hundred and four, I'm sorry, six hundred and seventy calls for service, fifty lockouts, I took vehicles and seventeen people incarcerated. And then you can see the crimes those individuals were allowed for. Uh, other than that, um, our two new officers go to the academy in February, I've got to get them at Fort Wayne, order their academy uniforms. Uh, we had active shooter training for the department at Riddle School two weeks ago. And then we've had a couple more trainings this month, physical tactics, state mandates, just to finish up the year. And that's all, about all I have, unless you have any questions?
Okay, um, any questions for chief? Yeah, I, I, a few weeks ago, in our staff meeting, Lenny and Chief Shots, and I think Tom was even involved, and I know Randy has been involved, but, uh, the group went down to the Peachtree Mall, took a look at that area down there going into the Kroger's.
Peachtree Village.
Peachtree Village.
Which is influenced by Arby's.
And that relates to this ordinance fourteen dash twenty-seven, team vetting the traffic code, you wanna go through that, chief?
Yeah, like, like the mayor said, uh, we had talked about what options we could do there, um, and it was brought up just to make it one way, so, uh, Lenny, Tom and I went down there to look at the area and see if it was gonna be feasible, I think, with minimal work, uh, taking those pylon bases out, uh, some striping and, and some signage, I think it would work great, um, it's gonna, because inevitably those, those plastic pylons, wherever they are, they get ran over and they don't last more than a week or so, the semis, it's never enough as it is for the semi to make that turn. The, when we made it, the, the right turn only, when you're heading out of there, it definitely helped with, uh, safety, the safety factor, you know, we haven't had any accidents and, um, it did help that, but it's, it's kind of one of those anomalies, what do you do with this? So, I think this is just the next evolution, is just make it one way and see how it works. If it doesn't work out or, or there are problems that we didn't perceive, we could have changed that.
It was kind of a narrow turning area in the semis that literally just torn all of those...
Right, now, you know, that incoming lane is, is narrowed by those, and I understand why, um, you gotta, to, yeah, put those there to, to eliminate that left turn, but it's just... I don't know, send them through.
Thank goodness nobody was driving a grain truck, right?
Right.
Eyes up for the rumble, it's really...
You're not supposed to drive one, right?
No, you're not.
That's not like the, the, we can all drive this, that is our...
That is our drive, that is our road.
All the way back, straight back.
Always straight back behind Kroger because that is a utility access.
It's easement to the back, land, uh...
Lip station.
Lip station back there. Right down at School View.
Yeah, we've discussed it with the property owners there, we've been into the, all of the store owners that would be affected right there, none of them have any problem with it, um, so, thanks for, we've talked with, Arby's, they don't have issue? Oh, no. Yeah. We've been in the managers, said no, that would be, be fine, I have any problem with that. Krogers, everybody talked to about it.
So, I have, unless you guys have a question about, whatever else, I'll fill out there.
Okay. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Lenny.
And, uh...
And, uh...
I don't, I just normally start to get right into him, I just, that's the culture for the holiday spirit, so I thought it'd be Merry Christmas to you two. But, uh, as, as he was, uh, elaborating on down there, the Arby's and Kroger's situation, I got all the signage and everything ordered, so it's just a matter of, uh, going down there and the races and what I'm...
Vetting the ordinance, yeah.
Putting some signage up, so, just, yeah.
At your, boy, you're editing game.
Out at the, out at the, well, if we don't use them down there, we got guy to the place to put them, so. We've been picking up bags of leaves and yard debris, um, chip and brush when possible. Uh, we've been running the trash containers downtown and out at the parks. We've got all the leaf machines, uh, put up for the winter, the one. Uh, we've been out picking up bulk leaves, we got the majority of them done before the snow, and, um, we've been out covering the town this week. About a month ago, uh, I got with, uh, Paul Cottle, and, uh, I noticed there'd been some sand, and we got a few calls about the, the ditch in between West Eighth Street and the Sixth Street, the mini ditch. So, I got with him and got, uh, got him to clean that out, um, and, uh, there was quite a bit of sand in the aquatic manner that he dug out there, I got to looking at further, um, our obligation goes clear past the, the, uh, oh, clear out, almost clerked to Montesola Road, it's, uh, the city's obligation to keep that mini ditch clean. And, uh, I've worked here twenty-eight years, and I've only seen clean once, that was like three years after I started, so, so it's been twenty, twenty-five years or so that it's been cleaned, and I'd like to get...
Are you telling me it needs cleaned?
Yeah. Been around the valley, I'm...
I got that.
I got that.
Okay.
But, uh, that was the first step of that, where it's open, that is between Eighth and Sixth, and like I said, it goes throughout, by Wilson's property to Montesola Road, and I'm sure it all needs it, so, um...
Yeah, I'm giving, giving Lenny a bit of a run time, we, we've had some flooding out there.
That, uh, pretty much drains all the west side of the town, so, we want to keep that flowing good, and I know like right guy in Riddle School, there's grass picking up all that creek, and that's just a big bug for that water, you know, so, um, we get that cleaned up, and I'll get with Paul, he's, he did, he did a great, uh, a nice job, I mean, it looks a lot cleaner. So, we'll, uh, I'll be talking with the mayor in that in the coming months and see if we can get that cleaned up a little bit better if you guys approve, and, um, other than that, then, uh...
What's the, uh, estimated, uh, time cleaning that up, maybe, any thoughts?
It's, it's in like, uh, three, four, a couple days.
Really, okay.
In between jobs just to do that.
It's not weeks?
No, no.
Okay. Great.
A guy with, uh, that's good on the escalator, could probably do it in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
So, it's a matter of getting, it's mostly the sand and, uh, silt, and like I said, aquatic matter that get dipped out of there. If you're not hauling the weight, it's laid along the side of the bank here, it's going, you know? But, um, other than that, we've been preparing the trucks, uh, and snow plow and equipment for winter, as we've already plowed, and then sanding, um, we clean up the snow all the way, the snow can bound down, that's what we'll have.
Let's make sure we get the leaf machine serviced really, really quick before we get them all pulled off, okay?
Yeah.
You know, that's, uh, something, we have a lot to do when we pull them out, let's get them cleaned up.
Yeah, we usually clean them up, but we don't service them until usually, before the season comes.
Yeah, I know, we pulled one out, because we only had a broken hitch, so we wanna go over and...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, any questions for Lenny?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, thank you, Lenny. Okay, I mentioned before, Marcus and Randy have an issue down the waste treatment plant, they're not here, and Derek, he's on vacation, Charlie.
Imagine that. Rascal.
Okay, going down to the committee reports, uh, area planning permission, Karen?
Yes, there was a meeting, and I'm sorry, there was a meeting.
They got Christmas party?
You have to understand that sometimes our meetings go long, even though...
Okay.
But anyway, um, I was unable to attend, so I do not... Wes took care of it.
Okay. Wes, would you like to...
Wes, why don't you step up on the podium, bud?
Okay, Karen, well, anybody have any questions for her? We're working, Karen. Oh, boy.
Nursing monkey.
Okay, all right. Councilman Goodman, uh, Vetco report?
Yeah, Vetco met December seventh, um, I was not in attendance, but I do have the minutes, um, reported a checking account balance of thirty-six thousand seven twenty-nine sixty-eight, operating reserve balance seventy-two thousand five six three ten. Twenty eighteen officers, Greg Loving was the past president, he served on the board for ten years and decided it was time for him to step down, um, so he's, I believe he's leaving the board, so that puts Brian Johnson in the role of president for twenty eighteen. And, uh, Greg, last week called me and asked if I would step into the role of vice president, which I have accepted, so, twenty eighteen I'll be the vice president on the Vetco, which will put me on the executive board, and that will mean that the county and the city now have representation on the executive board, which I think is a great idea that that's long overdue.
As the mayor mentioned, Frank Foley is a gentleman out of Peoria, uh, with a machine shop, he has a purchase agreement in front of him for acreage on Fourth Street, the Blackrider property, that seemed to be moving forward really well. Getting that project solidified is a key component in possibly luring a Caterpillar Assembly Plant to the area, so, um, it's where everyone's looking to, uh, move that Harry Webb is the new president of the Rochester Downtown Partnership, starting twenty eighteen, and as far as the, uh, business roundtable went, all good reports, all of the, the local businesses are busy, a lot of companies are adding equipment, which includes the foundry and, uh, machine casting specialties, and we've added some equipment as well, so, that is my report.
Yeah, I was in attendance, locally, business seems to be very good, our manufacturers, which is great news. Wow is actually working overtime during the holidays, paying trip time, I guess, for the holiday, Christmas Eve, they're working Christmas Eve, so, things are going, going well. Do we have any questions for Councilman Goodman? I do wanna congratulate and thank you, Councilman Goodman, for at least getting the minutes from the meeting there, some people thank to get the minutes. I just, yeah, I just... I just look at someone forward to a meeting from the area.
Before the mission.
You know, or a meeting.
No, I mean the bouncer.
Oh. The black, well, okay.
John, it's a good thing you're kind of over there.
Stay away from it. My bird right there.
And let's get this down to the park board, and Councilman Heidi, park board met on the eleventh, um, started off with a group from Plumb County Leadership Academy that, uh, presented their idea of helping and assisting in the development of a splash pad in Rochester. That is something the board had talked about, uh, throughout the years, looking into a splash pad, so they were receptive and the board agreed that, um, that they could go ahead and pursue moving forward with the research of the project. So, that's in the works. As mentioned earlier, I think by shot of partitions, baby changing tables, hand dryers for the bathrooms abandoned, so the park are in and being stored. Ugly truck has completed the tree trimming in the parks. And the golf course, the board voted unanimously to purchase a rough mower for the golf course. And then we're talking about doing, replacing quite a few pieces of equipment at once, um, but we're gonna phase that out over the next five or six, seven years if we can want a better cycle, so we don't have all of the, uh, machines breaking down at one time like we currently do. Carrie Weaver, her term was up, and, um, so that was her last meeting, and Ron Zeissmer is the new replacement.
Okay, any questions for Councilman Heidi? Thank you, Mason. Carrie is not here tonight, so we'll take this down to the, uh, V Z A and Councilman Aging, Councilman Smith.
No report on V Z A, and to be honest, I don't know whether our meeting has been moved to tomorrow night or whether it's, uh, next week, but I have not heard about that yet. Council on Aging did meet yesterday, uh, we did, we kinda have a combination Christmas party meeting for the last, uh, meeting of the year, it's Carrie and, and, uh, we worked through lunch, but, so that was nice yesterday. We reviewed with Rusty... Well, there were mostly appetizer kinds of things, oysters and cheese, and turkey wrapped things, and, uh, I think what all was there, I don't know, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was nice, a lot of cookies and other stuff. We did review with Rusty at length, uh, the, uh, transpo report, and basically, trips are going to be pretty much equal to what they were a year ago, and it's kind of interesting to note that over the last five years, they've gotten certainly a lot more efficient at what they do because, uh, over the last five years, about the same amount of trips in twenty twelve, but... But we have cut an average trip down from 7.03 miles a trip to 5.78. And that is just by combining more trips into one, going to the end of town and back and forth with multiple people. And so certainly more efficiencies have been built into that. Revenue is up just a little bit for transpo.
You know, I keep, I keep going back to back, all the trips, creating record, it's just per?
It is, about 180 trips a day.
Jeez, what, what are the qualifications to drive a transpo?
They do have to pass a, they're extensive, physical, which is, we can't even, no doctors in Fulton County are certified to do the physical. We were in prior years able to have them done in Rochester, but a hospital at Fort Lane came over and did them. That's out now, so we sent our, I think Rusty said it was Springfield that they went to. They have to be able to, they do squats, they have to get down on their knees and perform some things while in the physical, just because of the requirements for driving a transpo vehicle. So the requirements are pretty stringent. It's, yeah, it's not, it's, it's not an easy thing to pass, actually.
Isn't it, it's the standard federal highlighting, DOT physical, correct? Because we, our employees, our street department employees, and most of our employees have to have.
Right.
And you're correct, there's not a certified physician.
Yeah, and Rusty said just the act of, of being, the ability to pass in a wheelchair into the van is very difficult, so.
Now, is that part of, because the standard shipper's license doesn't include that? Isn't, that's the additional thing that they have to do for?
Right.
Person's capabilities.
Right.
Sorry, it's just, it's just interesting, the different levels of, because I know what we have to do for our CDO drivers, what my brother does for his CDO, and what they, it's just interesting.
Well, I mean, the record and everything, it's not surprising that there's more to it than just go down and drive the van, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But the record is incredible, it certainly is. The budget for 2018 was presented, we will act on that at next month's meeting. We are anticipating, including a raise for all the employees, the drivers. There's not been a raise for two years, so we'll see that go into effect in January. We had spent several meetings in special session reviewing personnel issues, and we made some changes. We had Attorney Perkins review those for the council. And those were presented and approved at yesterday's meeting. And the employee dinner was canceled because of inclement weather, and that's been rescheduled for January 27th. And if anybody's interested, the Christmas dinner for the Council on Aging folks is the 21st of December. And I believe that's the end of my report, if there are questions.
Anyone have any questions for Councilman Smith? Very good report, Marty, thank you. Chase is not here in the same room, so that drops us down to the tree board, and E M S, Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Neither board met since March. Sounds like a previous discussion, though I need to make some phone calls, we need to have a Christmas party, though.
You've been slighted.
I know, you took it to him.
Water board, John?
I'll call Marvin as soon as I get up.
There's some real short spots here. Yeah.
Be in January, that'll be alright. Okay, of course, the meeting started with a pledge. Update was presented with Derek to the board that everything was operating as normal and well. Carrie gave the chemical quotes for the companies that were selected, and chlorine was Jones Chemical, salt was Cartier, fluoride was Water Solutions. Election of Officers, Carolyn nominated Marvin as president, Marvin nominated Carolyn as secretary, and Keith as board member. January meeting is now going to be on January 8th, September 3rd meeting now going to be on September 4th. Board tabled the South 31 Project Discussion until the March meeting. John Query gave an update, from HWC gave an update on the Monroe Street project, and said he would be back in mid-January to talk about the Monroe Street project and the South 31 Project in a little more detail. He just happened to be in the area and stopped in to visit, he knew what I mean, he was going on, he stopped in to see us. Derek presented the board with employees taking vacations for the month of December. That's Derek. And update was presented by Derek, who are board on the Water Department's monthly duties for the month of November. Everything else was just fine and dandy with the Water Department, things are going smooth, that's what we want. And the motion to adjourn was passed, 2-0, and that's it. Any questions from anyone?
Thank you, John, it's pretty.
I'd like you all to have a Christmas party.
Please let us know if it's, even if it's scheduled in January, we could be there.
I can, yeah, alright.
Okay, the last thing on the reports of committees is the Rochester Downtown Partnership, and Mr. Harry Webb is here to give us a report. First of all, Harry, thank you for being here tonight, and second of all, congratulations on your store downtown. It's looking really, really nice.
Apparently have windows, you can see out.
Yeah, and Eric doesn't have a window in front of his house, so we're ahead of him, okay?
Still waiting, just passed us down.
Sure will.
And then this paper here will be the other one, Carrie will be.
Yeah, there is a work plan, and basically a list of board members. Yeah, this is the start of a, you know, well, January will be the start of a new year, and I've been elected to serve as president. It's kind of a, kind of changed, because there hasn't really been a bunch of transition. I wasn't vice president last year, with Amy moving kind of off the roll, and Sarah taking a full-time job. It kind of left a vacuum, but I think we have a, we have really developed a really good work plan for next year. You know, part of, Stephen Ray, the gentleman who does the, Graham Ray for Fedco and others, and also Liz on for RDP, helps us create this work plan, and I think there's four pages to that plan that kind of highlights what each of the committees will be working on for 2018, and I don't have a copy of it right here in front of me. And on some of the highlights of it. The main, the main focus of the organizational committee would be to figure out ways to raise money. We are a 501(c)(3), we are organized now to take the donations, but there really hasn't been an active solicitation of funds. So that is, we're going to start working on having, you know, having some assets to work with so we can go on and do projects. Instead of retrospect, for instance, this downtown, very successful promotion, we had the Santa stroll. And she spent half her time trying to raise the money, and the other half the time trying to put off events. She pulled off a major event, but it'd be so much better if we had a $3,000 budget and said, here, go do this event. And she could have spent the rest of her time putting that together. And so that, and that's kind of, you know, the same situation with the benches and the micracks. You know, we spend an awful lot of time coming up with an idea and developing it, and then have to come back with the money. And it'd be so much better if we had assets that we could, as a board, move forward and say, okay, next year, we've got X number of dollars that we can spend on doing things we were going to do with this money.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'd say first and foremost here, what you've got her as the chair of promotions, she was very, Patina Zabel.
Oh, yeah, she is.
She was very impressive, very impressive.
This roster of the board has expanded dramatically, we've had a heck of a lot of traction. You can see there are some very effective people that are part of this organization now, and Patina, being the chairman of the promotions committee, has injected a lot of energy, and she hit it out of the park for that Santa stroll. I mean, it was a, I've been downtown for a long time, had Santa come every year. Never have had the response that we had this year for the event, and, you know, the weather was very cooperative, but we were very busy. We had an entire evening stayed open an extra hour and a half, and it was good. And everybody just had fun, you know, in fact, we had a couple thousand people downtown, and kids are having fun, their parents are having fun. There's a lot of stuff going on, and she's full of ideas for how to improve it. So I think we're going to see some great events this summer as well.
The only problem we had was poor Chris Lee drove all the way to South Bend to get to reject your Morsky's proclamation.
But he, but he. He swore to be out of time, I suppose.
But he did have a nice view of everything that was going on, so.
Yeah, it was, Mason is chairing, chairing up the Economic Vitality Committee, and they've made some strides this last year. And we now have a drainage leakage report that is going to be a good tool for them, and they, we have a master list of all the inventory of properties, and they've got some really good plans for next year as well. The Design Committee is going to be chaired by Lance Nelson, that was the committee I was been over the last couple of years. Our board is, our committee has also expanded dramatically, and their main focus of the Design Committee is going to be two different Oprah funded grants, one being the application of a Main Street revitalization grant, which will be about trying to do major facade renovation for downtown, I'll talk about that here in a second. And then the other one would be a DRG grant, which would be to purchase and install layfinding signage in Rochester in general, not necessarily in downtown, but throughout the community. Those are two Oprah funded grants that the city will be, hopefully be the applicant for. Those are big projects for us, and we are, I think, well on the way of getting moving with those. I won't read into all the details of the work plan, but having this plan and this, this thing all interfaces with what Fedco's doing, what the redevelopment commission's doing, so everybody is finally, I think, moving in the same direction, like getting some projects established. I think everybody's kind of come to terms with RDP and a Main Street organization, and is it necessary, is it not necessary? It's been debated for 25 years in this community, but we have never successfully brought in outdoor, outside money, mostly because we did not have an effective Main Street organization. And so, you know, our goal is to have that effective organization and to really help open, open the doors to getting some federal and state dollars that we can use to improve downtown. The Main Street Revitalization Program is one of the handouts I gave you, and that's what we're kicking off first. This is a Oprah block grant, and they, the Community Development Block Grant Program can be used for three different things. These are up to a half million dollar requests, and a community is eligible to do one block grant, I believe, about every seven years. It is a scored project. We have been told by a couple different individuals that Rochester sits in a very good position to receive a Oprah Block Grant. And one of the three things, in the past, we were kind of saving it for streetscaping. We had thought that we would use the half million for that. But now with the stormwater project looming, and in fact, it's going to be very disruptive to sidewalks and everything, we've shifted that to a facade renovation program. We don't want to wait around for this and kill another three or four years while we wait for the stormwater project to develop. We want to move forward with a facade grant program. What this will do, I guess the good thing for the council is it really should not cost the city of Rochester any money. The city of Rochester is going to be the applicant, would have to be the applicant for this grant. Money would all funnel through Shada, it could be up to a half million dollars, but the property owners, the business building owners are going to be the ones who kick in, kick in money. But the good thing is it could be a renovation that would be, we don't know the complete terms of what next year's grant is going to be, but this year it was an 80% match, so a building owner could get windows, do facade work like the drugstores had, or perhaps a roof, and get 80% of project costs covered. With the half million dollars, we would hope to do 10 to 15 major projects in downtown Rochester. The theater was going to be an applicant for this just themselves, they would not have a $500,000 project, and so we are definitely wanting to include the theater in this, this $500,000 request. It could allow them to focus on raising money more for the inside of the building, and we can help them dramatically by helping pay for the marquee, and getting rid of the flintstone rock and that kind of thing on the outside of the theater. That would be part of this half million dollars. There have been several building owners come to me that were excited about it, and we're going to have an informational meeting on Thursday, January 18th, I believe is the day. Going to hold it at Juretti's at 6:00 PM, putting out invites to all downtown building owners to come and learn about this, and find out how much interest there is. There's also, one of the other handouts I gave you is Stephen Ray's timeline, what would be required to do to apply for that grant. He is the grant writer, and he's already funded, so there, again, there's no cost for a grant writer on this project. So initially, I would just like the council, to get the council's blessing, it won't be officially a vote to apply until we've had a chance to get all building owners in a room to find out how much interest there is. But assuming, we would like to move forward with that if the council still approves. Any questions on that?
Basically, you're looking for not, council is to whether you say we're being sponsored or not.
Yeah, shall we keep moving forward on this? Because I don't want to do it, the city has to be the applicant.
Does she want to?
Yes.
No, Mason and I probably aren't, they were.
You wouldn't go down eight street.
Yes, it does, oh, natural.
It's part of the store quarter. It will require the yo-yo blight statement we've been having, we've had a, you know, the city, the downtown area was blighted.
Yeah.
And then it had to become spotlighted to take on the theater, and now we're going to have to re-designate the area as blighted. But we have all the language and codes, so if we move forward, that will be a definition of the area that has to be considered blighted. Receive a blight.
So you did get confirmation.
Corey, anything you want?
As Carrie thinks it has been spotlighted on the theater, I'm not 100% sure.
Well, I'd say it's been kind of confusing, so, and like I said, he's probably the same vote as I.
And really, the only people that care are Oprah, but it depends on which grant you're applying for, is how the designation has to be, when. The theater couldn't apply in a blighted area just by themselves. If you're blighted, then you have to all apply them, so they had to be removed so they could apply, then they didn't apply. So now we're going to put the blighted area back over the whole area again, so we'll show all of them applying. do the show all and apply, so all apply.
Okay, okay.
That would take council action as well. But obviously, we don't need to address that until we, say, the next step is really getting the building owners in a room.
Right.
And having the grant writer, and we have, um, probably going to be using the same architect that I used on my building. She did the downtown plan that we've been using as a guidebook the last three years. She's the one that drew up all the spec drawings that are in that plan. She's very familiar with Rochester. She's the one that came to me and says, why are you not applying for this? Because she did, she just received and did the work for anything Greenfield. Now, there's only three applicants last grant cycle for this half million dollars, and two of them have funded. One of us has sent back a little more information, so there's a really good shot that it won't be that competitive.
Do you have any idea on an average what, uh, what, uh, building owner can expect?
Well, it would depend on what they would want to do, but, you know, replacing windows, getting the windows back to, um, to the full size window, double painting glass window, which is expensive, but this could be handled in a private like this. There's a lot of roofs needing work. I think, um, you know, there's several building owners expressed interest in their roof. And some of it might just be cutting cosmetic things, you know, maybe taking some of the older, um, and Lance has talked about his barrel awning, taking that off, trying to get the wood off and exposing the brick and, you know, doing some, so I think projects could be in range of, you know, 15,000 to 80,000 dollars. The theater is probably going to be in 175,000 dollar range, project cost. So, um, depending on what the building owner is willing to do, not take on a large roof, obviously, that could throw a lot of stress on that as well.
So it wouldn't be a situation, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it wouldn't be a situation where the nominal match, Harry Webb, you have his storefront all taken care of.
Well, it would've been nice to know about it two years ago.
But I mean, you'd have, you'd have a major investment.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, the, um, I would've paid 20 cents on the dollar per person paying. 80 cents on the dollar.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, this, you know, if, if we get a half million dollars worth of projects...
Yep.
Or let's say we get three quarters of a million dollars worth of projects, then we may have to make them more competitive or make the building owners increase their match in order to, um, you know, get, work that, so we can leverage as much work as possible with that half million dollars. We may score projects as, well, okay, we're going to pay 80% on windows, we're going to pay 60% on roofs. You know, who knows how we'll possibly go those together until we really know what the interest is and how many dollars a road will look at. But I think we could easily spend half a million dollars on that project. Well, if you're spending somewhere in 50,000 per week, but, and what, that would have a huge impact. Backed up with the Stormwater Project and maybe Stella down the road, we'll get, get some of her.
We're delighted to have you and to have this, and thanks for doing this.
Well, I'm just glad they quadrupled my salary.
Well, talk behind that 2,000, that's going to happen, maybe I'll run for another...
We expedited your windows work.
Wait, we've had good people along, but you're going to take it to the next level at the...
Well, we've got a lot of good people in place, so we're going to need a lot of help, so.
Well, you know, I, again, I want to, all parent of what Marty said, you have been a leader downtown, you really have, Mary. And, I mean, even going back two years ago with the Suda Veteran effort and everything, you've been a leader, you care about Rochester.
Sure.
We need, we need more, more Harry Webb.
That's exciting. You know, I think it's, I think a lot of people are excited about possible vision for the downtown community and hopefully we can continue to move that forward. But, you know, it all starts with right here in this ring. You know, leadership for anything we do downtown starts in this, in this ring. And it has to be a concerted, everybody moving in the same direction. In the past, we've all been fragmented on what we want to do and what we want to do. Um, you know, these business plans we've come up with and stuff, it's moved us into where, at least as an organization, we're moving in one direction, but it really requires consistent leadership from the mayor and city council all the way down. And we can be the workforce of, really, this council.
Thanks, Harry.
All right, thanks.
And if all of you want to join, Mary and I, this, um, the second...
You guys are having a Christmas party?
Yes. I was just going to say, we're going to have a Christmas party because we're going to stand outside and just stare at the front of this building because it's so pretty.
Isn't it beautiful? Isn't it beautiful? It is gorgeous.
Well, I'm going to end up wrecking my car sometime because I keep it in my car behind.
Those windows, seriously, they're what, about 200 pounds or so?
That was a bit...
Sure. You're not going to have many birds break one of those windows. Okay.
Don't talk under words.
I suppose, with that commercial, yeah. All right, that takes us down to AD8 concerns, which we have none. And legal issues, Andy?
Uh, just the ordinance, uh, 14-2017 might require, uh, one part of explanation.
Okay.
And that is the, uh, it makes reference to the repeal of a prior ordinance and most don't, uh, and so that bears some explanation. When I, I saw the report of the road, East Tree Village Road, that sounds really familiar. And what I was remembering is when we turned, they didn't give a tunnel, they had one direction. So when I went back and reread that ordinance, it was clear to me that it would, uh, be less confusing to simply repeal that, uh, because it, it also created a new, uh, schedule under chapter 75, so that it would be easier to just repeal that and, uh, make it the one-way as, as requested. So that's, that's why we use and why it represents a repeal of a prior ordinance, and that was the one that made that right turn only and made, and it also, uh, which created kind of a new, I mean, category of the schedules, I think, um, which is a little different. So, uh, we just, we feel it and say, okay, let's repeal that, which was, uh, in theory, a two-way road in its own case, I think, so. That's all. We also talked a little bit about, uh, the annexation, so we're probably, uh, we'll be receiving some more information.
Want to explain a little bit about what's going on there?
Um, essentially, the, the meeting, we, we discussed different types of annexations. Uh, and think of them as a spectrum from the most cumbersome to the easiest. Uh, the easiest type of annexation is when the, uh, property owners are the petitioners. Uh, that, in this case, will be, uh, will be Tedco. Sometimes you see them with developers who, as they're plotting out before they show stuff on blogs, they petition to the annexation to the city. And that's where we are with this. And, uh, with, uh, with Dean from Law, and, uh, kind of looked at this as, and served two purposes, not only, uh, we're going to have property developed by the city, but it will also serve as a kind of a ride on, uh, should we, we want to do any future annexation in any time, we have some familiarity in this under the current ordinance, which I think will end in at least 2015, now that it's the statute changing like this. And so, uh, maybe we need to be more mindful going forward than cities and towns do, and 12 years ago, the annexation, but that's what we're talking about. So, uh, we have to follow it.
Yeah, another interesting point that came out of that discussion, if you think about this, saying, boy, how's that going to be affected? There's a county tip district out there, which funds the Forest Street Sewer Bottom Payment. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but I believe what I heard was the tip would remain in place of the county until that obligation is taken care of and then the tip goes away.
By statute, it's a revenue neutral proposition for it. And the county will not lose a dollar by us.
Doing, yeah, exactly. If it, if it doesn't come to mind, yeah. Anything else, Andy?
I don't have any.
Okay.
What's the timeframe of actually annexing the...
2018.
We're kind of, we're talking about something that would happen in 2018.
It, yes, it should happen in 2018. Uh, because there would be, there would be some problems with 2019 because it's the year of the census. And why, why they chose that as a marker, I think, has to do with, uh, political machinations that happen in larger areas, uh, with voting issues and such. But, um, that's one of the reasons, so we don't want six to over 12. How big a deal for this?
It should move along pretty quickly.
Oh, that's if you have to actually skip 19 or 12.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, you can set it up so you pass the ordinance, uh, that we're in 2015.
Anything else, Mary? Okay, if we move down to, speaking of ordinances, if we move down to ordinance 14-2017, traffic code amendment, I would entertain a motion to, at the first reading, ordinance 14-2017.
The Asian ones, I, I would move, uh, to read in its entirety, sorry.
Those in favor of reading ordinance 14-2017 in its entirety, please signify by raising your hand. Chairman Adams, Councilman Good.
Ordinance number 14-2017, an ordinance amending the traffic code. Whereas the common council of the city of Rochester that certain portions of the city's traffic regulation should be amended, whereas the city previously amended chapter 75, schedule three, and created chapter 75, schedule five entitled Other Prohibitions by ordinance number 1-2014, whereas the city now believes that Feast Tree Village Road should be a one-way street in the westerly direction, thereby eliminating the need to regulate traffic approaching Main Street, the subject of ordinance 1-2014. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Rochester that ordinance 1-2014 is hereby repealed. Now therefore be it further ordained by the common council of the city of Rochester that chapter 75, schedule four of the Rochester City Code entitled One-Ways Streets and Alleyies is hereby amended to include the following. Street, East Tree Village Road, location from Main Street West, entire road, direction westbound.
Okay. I would entertain a motion, uh, well, first of all, is there any discussion on the first reading of ordinance 14-2017? Okay, yes. So, okay, should it be the entire road?
That's what we were just talking about back there.
It should only be...
Until...
Until the parking lot.
Until the, yeah, where it goes over, behind Taco Bell and all that, that's going to be just not today.
Yeah, I think the intent was to stop there in the parking lot.
Yeah. The edge of Kroger's parking lot, so you can turn right.
Well, people will come in in front of Kroger if they go north to the end. They would have to go east on this road.
Right.
So maybe the one way from the corner at Arby's.
225.
Whatever the cross street is.
Does that actually...
That's not a city road.
No.
So that's...
It's a left.
None of that is, clear to that stop sign, the midwest, all that's private.
So probably should work that.
From Main Street to the first intersection at the private road.
There you go.
And the map that I was getting, I thought it ended when, you're saying, you're saying all that's road.
I love that.
I said, "tire road," and that's imagining it started main and it ended at parking lot.
Earlier on, someone said that it was the entire way through.
Yeah.
Well, then that'd be right.
That would make sense.
But I'm not, uh, I'm not sure. I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, that wasn't the intent, was it? Guys, to make it one-way clear back to the back.
No.
I have a feeling if we look, what I'm guessing is that from that intersection at parking lot to the lift station is probably a right-of-way easement, deed it over to us on that property.
Yeah, you're probably right.
It's probably an easement, so the road would end where you guys were talking.
Yeah.
Because I bet if we pulled up, that's probably...
Google shows it as quite a long lane. So can we leave the verbiage that way? Does Councilman Goodman stand, or do we need some clarification?
I think our signage would take care of it.
Yeah, I don't mind discovering. But anybody reading it might be, well, be interested. But I don't think anyone, I think the city will all look at the ordinance to make sure...
You open that candle.
If, if he only spent a week here.
You're going to be the first one to call Brian.
Okay, do that, this is dramatical with that first paragraph, whereas the common council of Rochester, city of Rochester believes.
Yeah, we're, we're cut.
Should, should be asserted. I wasn't going to say anything, but then Mason brought something up, so.
Where?
The first paragraph. Do you mean Rochester of that?
Oh, it's in Rochester.
Language for the download believes.
There, it's in there. As amended. As amended. That'll have to be your vote.
Oh, okay. Make a note, Fitzwater is not invited to the tree ward Christmas party.
Unless he agrees with Greg.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a second reading of, uh, 14-27, traffic code amendment by, uh, title only. Move by Goodman, seconded by Heidi, though in favor. Chairman Adams. Ordinance number 14-27, an ordinance amending the traffic code. Any discussion? Then, uh, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to the third reading of, by title only, of 14-27. Move second. Mason made the motion, Goodman seconded. Those in favor?
Another question, we should, and we should go forward with this or this table to the media?
There's anybody?
Is to be sure.
I can, I, I can add, I'm, I'm, I'm going on the map that the city gave me to prepare the ordinance. It looked like it ended at, I can, I can...
And that's it is, is to this.
I can, I can go, I can go to survey and get through the board. They can weigh in on that if it's a concern. I just don't, uh, of all the things I would invest in a survey for, this wouldn't be a first stop of the list.
Okay.
I mean, I, I guess, I guess I'm not concerned about, uh...
Well, it helped you out a little bit, John.
Mal enforcement.
It, uh, it's going to be stop, you know, it's going to have stop bars, a stop sign.
Yeah.
Turn your hands.
Oh, I understand that. I, I was just concerned about whether the length of the, the news.
I understand.
I personally think that it goes right to the start, to the, to the start of what I call the parking lot, you know?
Yeah.
And that's all really concerned.
Right.
I just kind of check out the line of what, this, um, what, maybe put that, just like the real shares and, uh, I think our, you know, things are fixed.
There we go.
I would entertain, uh, a motion at the third reading by title. You already did that.
We haven't, we haven't happened.
Yeah, okay, those...
I just agree.
Okay. We're ready for the third reading.
No, vote, I think you already had your third reading.
Okay. Those in favor of passing ordinance 14-27?
This is the third reading.
This is the third, we had my third reading.
I thought so.
Okay.
Voting to read it for the third time, I have a...
We didn't vote to read it for the third time.
Okay, those in favor of reading ordinance by title only? Okay, ordinance number 14-27.
Everybody know and you'll say, oh.
She can't, too late, it's done. Okay.
Just making sure.
I would entertain, uh, a motion to pass ordinance, no, shoot. Those in favor of passing ordinance 14-27?
You're going to write.
Please.
I make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 14-27.
Okay, and those in favor, it's passed. Get your black apron. Don't throw me a curveball, don't throw me a curveball. Okay, moving, looking right along to the next one. We have a resolution which only requires one reading! It's resolution 14-27, it's a budget transfer for... It's a budget transfer for 2017. I entertain a motion to read Resolution 14-2017 in its entirety. I'll second. Those in favor? Unanimous.
Resolution 14-2017. Whereas the accounts herein named by reconferencing expenses at the time the regular budget was adopted are insufficient for the needs of such accounts for the balance of 2017, and an emergency now exists for additional funds. Such emergency is hereby expressly found and declared. Section 1, there's hereby transferred the following amounts to the following accounts. General fund from wellness benefit, $400, to office supplies, $400. Park non-reverting operating fund, golf cart fuel, $360, to park board wages, $360. MBH fund, from equipment, $40,000, to professional services, $40,000. Redevelopment commission fund, from capital improvements, $3,750, to professional services, $3,750.
Okay, motion to accept Resolution 14-2017. So move. Move, and I need a second. I'll second. Move and seconded. Those in favor signify by raising your hand unanimously. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Those in favor, thank you. We're going to adjourn. Thank you back there, put your hands up. I would like to say, stand up, please, that...
How would you?
Well, I know we're here. This is, this is not official, so you can't hold my feet to the fire. Merry Christmas to all of you. And thank you for a very...